I'd like to call this meeting order at 6:02. Welcome, everybody. We do have a new member. And Olivia, what's your last name again? I'm sorry?
Leoni.
Leoni. And everybody can go around the table, start with Judy.
Hi, I'm Judy Pierce. I am the Frontier rep from Sunderland.
Hello, I'm Lynn Roberts. I'm from Sunderland too.
I'm Bob Decker from Deerfield.
Keith McFarland from Sunderland.
Patty Kavanaugh, Business Manager.
Lynn Carey, Superintendent.
Bob Hala from Whately.
Phil Cantor, Conway.
Mary Raymond Deerfield.
I'm Darren Myers. I'm the student representative for this meeting.
You know me.
I do. Sorry, I show up everywhere.
When we get all that all done, I'd like to approve minutes from April 5th and a special meeting from April 23rd. And if there's any questions about any of the minutes. Do I have a second? Any questions? Mr. Decker?
I think that your attorneys, our attorneys are going to want, or the attorney that's going to certify the title for the sale of the real estate, may want a roll call vote, or a record of the roll call to make sure that there was the proper requisite number of people voting. So I would just suggest that, you know, the tally be amended to show that I voted against it, you voted, you abstained. There were two members absent. Billy Smith and...
And Lynn.
And Lynn was absent. And the others voted affirmatively, so you've got to turn on it, add the numbers up.
I already had that done. I printed that out. Well, I can't print it out right now, but I did record the vote that night as I normally do on something that could be controversial. And I am trying to add up right now for you to tell you what the number... I think, didn't I tell you the numbers that night, Bob?
I don't think you had it that night.
I did.
Yeah, you did.
So is that a motion to amend the minute?
We haven't approved it, yeah. Once we have the number, we could just...
I think, let's approve the meeting's minutes from April 5th first. We have a first and a second from April 5th. All in favor? I think everybody was there, if I'm not mistaken. Let me just look.
Olivia, because you weren't there, I'm going to put you down as abstained.
Yeah, because you know what? I don't, it's not here. I have the file and it's empty. I think I forgot to save it.
Well, anyway, we need to...
Because I read it to him that night.
We need to incorporate it in the minutes, just so that there won't be any question later on passing title.
Are you talking about the weighted vote, Bob?
Yes, yeah.
So Cindy Womack was here and she voted yes. Phil Cantor was here, he voted yes. Bob Decker voted no. Mary Raymond was present and voted yes. I know, I did this. Bill Meyer Pezy was here and voted yes. Mary Raymond, oh, and Bob Decker. It was Damian Fosno, he voted yes, Bill and Mary.
So Bill wasn't here.
Bill Meyer Pezy was...
Oh, no, Bill Smith wasn't here.
No, but Mayor Pezy was. Judy Pierce, you voted yes, correct?
That's correct.
And Lynn Roberts, you voted... No, you weren't here. You weren't here. It was... Keith, were you here?
Yes.
Okay. And William Smith was not here. Bob Hala abstained. So it passed 4.6, well, total vote, 7.595.5 to .98003.
Well, just amend them, just include it in the minutes. That's what it was.
And now I'm saving it 10 times.
Okay.
This is the first time in two years my notes got amended. All right, let's clear that.
I was just asking her if she understood what the hell we were talking about, the weighted vote. Because I'm not sure...
Maybe we need to explain it to her?
Yes. She's going to sit here for three years. She needs to know why we do this.
Okay. A few years ago, there was a court case down the other end of the state called, I think it was Kelleher. It was a, and it's called one man, one vote. And the courts found that school committees such as ours had a proportionally vote. So the votes had decided proportionally. Some of them, and some of them where each town gets a vote. Each town committee representative, Bob Hala, Mary Raymond, Phil, and Keith, get one vote apiece. And the rest of us have percentages. Okay?
Based on the census.
Yeah. And it varies between, it varies between the towns.
Right. Based on the last national census population.
Anyway, I fought hard to get that proportional vote. Because for years, Deerfield had three votes, and there were two in each of the other towns. So we had a third of the vote, and we paid roughly half the cost for all those years.
And yet we survived.
We did. We did. But anyway, that's why we do it, and it's not very often we have to record a roll call vote. Most of the time, things are unanimous, except when guys like me vote.
So we have a motion on the change of the minutes. We have to vote on that first, and then...
To include the tally.
Do we just get one vote, Bob, now? Or do we have to vote on both the amended?
Well, you should vote the amendment to the minutes. And then you vote the whole thing.
So you're going to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. And who seconded it?
I will.
Thank you, Judy. So we're talking about the amended weighted vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Want to stand?
He wasn't here. The one here came over.
Oh, abstained. So that would be 7-0-2.
Yep.
Okay, for the minutes amended?
So moved.
So moved from Bob?
Second.
Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
Phil Cantor? That's the longest I spent on accepted minutes in a long time.
I just want to make sure you don't have a headache when you go to...
You're right, Bob. Hey.
The minutes, the minutes to, we're going to be weighted vote.
Right. But what, could be voted for?
It could be voted for, the minutes.
Then the minutes will be...
Ms. Kavanaugh, are you ready for...
I am. So I have...
We have lots of papers.
Lots to talk about tonight. So you had, I sent you 23 warrants totaling $1,458.38. And you happily signed those for me tonight. I did not get the report out to you early because I had spent an extensive amount of time with it, and I wanted to make sure it was in good order. So now I just lost mine. That's all right. I can, yeah, but these say my copy's on. Oh, I thought I'd share, but do you want any variance? No, that's all right. I can use this. I'll find one. Okay. So this is the report. If we look at the variance report that I've been doing all year, and we're going to go down to the bottom, that starts with the tuition accounts. And right above it, it says total budget savings at $131 was $6,587.88. My first note is when you're looking at the math on this sheet, disregard the calculations as they are redone in April. So I'm leaving them here because we were looking at them, but when I'm doing my math, I'm starting with the $12,051.52 to the positive that we were at in December. So right now, our tuition accounts, our out-of-district tuition accounts are over budget by $25,887.99. This was due to two unexpected increases in tuitions awarded by OSD. They set the rates. We also had, we do, we still have a potential decrease if a placement changes for another student, and that's something that our sped director is still working on with a state agency. But in the meantime, we had to put another student out. Right now, we can use the excess in the summer support line of $78, $178.36 to offset that. The second thing on here that we were looking at is, since the fire, the fire chief ordered us to put in a new hood over the kiln in the art room. We've only got one quote so far to have, to get that done, and it's $10,000. Mr. Lesko thinks that's high, and he's trying to get more quotes, but he's not getting anybody to answer him. So...
I guess about this though, because apparently this was not an order. This was a request, and that a hood is not actually required. It's just desired. And, you know, to me, fire code either requires something or it doesn't. And if it does not require something, we ought not to do it.
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Darius, but the fire marshal said we must have the hood in by a certain time. We cannot use the kiln unless the hood is on.
Yeah. Yes, I mean, he was kind of, he said, since you had a fire, I can require you to put this in. A device like this is going to give off chemicals when it heats. Now, according to other, this is controversial because according to other potters, they don't have vents on these things because the clay they're using isn't giving off. They're not doing precious metals and such. And that, does this really fall under the fire marshal's purview? Now, we were obviously victims of a fire. And so we were kind of in the, well, we'll do what we're being asked to do amongst other violations we had in the buildings that we were correcting. We didn't know it was going to be this much. And so we corrected all the other issues of the building, and then he said, well, where are you on the hood? And we said, we're getting quotes. He said, please send me when you sign an authorization. Let me know, and I'll sign off on the building when you get authorization to spend money on it. When you put money down on a quote, on a person to do a job, rather. We had reached that point. So basically, we have this kind of open-ended, he gave us 30 days to comply. We complied with everything else. And this is one where the question is, does it fall under the fire marshal's purview? I don't know where the answer is to that.
But he's not signing off until we do it.
And he, and from my understanding, and I don't know who to consult on this, but my understanding, the fire marshal has a lot of leeway in this area. And so the question is, how much, and how much can you push back, and how much would it cost us to push back? And then, you know, should we have a vent in there or not? And so we're trying right now to see if we can get that away from $10,000, closer to under $5,000, and then put that in as best practice, I guess. So the problem is, I was going to say, the one thing is, why don't you just fire at night when no one's there? Most of the firings last 24 hours, so I guess you could do it over weekends and such, but...
But the fire had nothing, the actual fire had nothing to do with the kiln. It was because somebody put a box on it.
Correct. And so this is one of those things, there's not a lot of kilns out there. So when you go to fire code, you don't, there's not, if you have a kiln, this is how it has to be hooked up and vented. So the kiln is actually vented with some venting pipes that would be similar to how you vent a dryer. Okay? They use some flex pipes in some certain areas. And didn't like that at all. However, that, it was installed by, you know, when it was installed, it was, you know, I believe it was signed off on when it was installed. But, you know, we're kind of in that weird spot because we don't know what the, we don't know the specs of a kiln, and who to call for specs of a kiln on those kind of things. So a lot of the newer kilns now, they have vents on them to, you know, so they can do these metals and that kind of stuff. This one is only about five or six years old. And I was here when we got it. And so it's not that old, and, you know...
Bob, how often do we use it? And what would it cost to take the item that's going to be fired to another kiln? So it doesn't cost us $10,000 to be used every week?
I would think you're right that it does cost every couple, I mean, it does cost, it does be used every couple weeks. The students, you know, do a sort of project, and then when they get enough to fire, they fire together. Because it's also processes, glazing, and all this other stuff that takes place as well. So we invested a lot of money to get that kiln, to suddenly not use it for a couple thousand. You know, I mean, I know that at $10,000, you start talking about that, that's part of the program of the arts there. So, I mean, it is, it is a nice thing to have, and it's something we brag about when we talk about our arts program, being able to do 3D art with clay and fire right there.
Is it a complicated hood you're trying to put in, or is it just going to go over the kiln, and it's going to have a hose and a fan that's going to drive it out to the wind?
It's going to be made out of sheet metal.
It's going to be made out of sheet metal, yeah.
My next question is, does a tech school show students there have any expertise that maybe they could fabricate us something like that for a lot less than $10,000?
Again, I'm not on the lead on that, but that's, we got the initial bid, and my sole bid was too high, and now he's trying to see, you know, work with, you know, the people we have doing general HVAC work with us to see if they can...
The other person I was thinking was probably Blake Gilmore. I don't know if you can play Gilmore. Blake Gore. Yeah. That he might...
Is that his name?
Yeah, I know who it is.
And he does sheet metal fabrication.
He does.
All I can hear is put it out.
We'll give his email back.
I'll write it down. I'll send him an email right now. So anyways, if we had to find the $10,000, we would, there's $2,000 left in our acquisition of new equipment line, and Darius was going to give up $7,931 of his general supply money. But we'll hold on that, but it's, I'm just reporting what I was, you know, that these were the things I was asked to find money for.
We don't have much money left.
I understand that, Bob. I'm...
I know. I appreciate it.
Giving you what I was asked to do.
Is it possible just to push back on this? Ask the fire marshal, what part of the fire code is he, does this? Because there's, you know, regulatory overreach is, you know, is just a guy that is extra cautious and wants us to do more than what is required. And when you think about it, it wouldn't, it would not have prevented the fire.
That's correct.
So spent, that makes it even sillier.
And it's not an anseled system. It's going to spray everything out.
If it will make you happy, I have a friend who is a fire chief.
Yes.
I will call him.
Yes.
I will ask him his opinion.
Yes, please do.
He's pretty local, too, so I can call him and ask him his opinion.
A lot of times, if you just push back a little bit, it goes away.
Well, he's always told me, if you push back, you're going to regret it.
It's not, you know, it's...
That was his advice to me on another issue. You push back, you're going to regret it.
You should be worried about it?
No, but I do feel that was the initial, was that you are, you are on the graces of his judgment on certain things. You know, and so, you know, we were trying to be mostly compliant, the last thing you might do is be a school that's not compliant, then that issue's later on. So giving a second opinion on it, I think that's fine. I mean, I can have another conversation with him about, you know, I could certainly use the weight of the school committee. Would like to have an answer, you know, where is this, you know, where's the documentation to justify the spending of this kind of money? Because it's, you're right, when you're talking about $10,000 versus $500 for a, you know, a range hood, you know, because that's essentially what it is, is a very large range hood. You know, it's a good question. And so that's where we're at. So...
Thanks. When you say sign off, get him to sign off. Sign off on what?
He did an inspection of the school, and so he found us in violation of the hood. We had, we had a lot of violations throughout the building on small things. You know, you can't have a piece of paper within five feet of a door. Okay? Because if someone lights on a fire, you can't get through the door. Except if that, except if that piece of paper is directions on how to get out of the building before the lockdown.
And Lynn?
And so, so, but we went through, and there were certain things, like we painted tiles in the art room. You ever see that? It's really beautiful. Well, that's non-flammable retardant paint. So now we have to paint overall of them with a fire retardant surface. So we ordered that paint to do that. We didn't have the curtain documentations to show them, to show the curtains were ready to be go, were good to go. We've since found that documentation, and we got signed off on it. That was the big one.
That was like the mural on the corner that they did over?
That's a race, because it's not, it's a non-flammable...
There used to be a block.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion? If we can get this cost under $5,000, and it would be a safety issue, it would help us as a safety issue, would we be okay with that? To do that? I mean, it's not going to hurt us to have a hood over the kiln. It is going to hurt us to spend 10 grand. But if we can find someone to do this for 5 grand, and we're adding safety to the building, is that so hard?
Realistically, we will probably, it'll probably take till the next meeting to get it lined up. We can get things lined up and bring it back, and then we can go exactly where we stand. Your research, other bids, other ways of doing it, and they come back with that number. And then we'll have a better idea where we are with the budget at that point, too, so we can make even more informed decisions. If that's where we want to go with that money.
Blake's a townie, maybe.
Well, he, you know, he grew up in town. He went to the Frank County check, though.
It's all right. We'll nail that against him.
No, he and his brother both went there. They were with the...
Understand, this is not our fire chief. This is the fire marshal.
This is the state fire marshal.
The fire chief is enforcing the fire marshal's request.
This is the state fire marshal.
This is the state fire marshal's office.
So it's a different, that's why, again, it's not, you know, it's not, you know, it's working with the, you know, we're working with the local, they kind of carry out, and they make sure that we carry moving forward. But this is not, they're doing what they're being told to do.
So we don't leave anything untitled in the kiln anymore?
We stopped that, we stopped that practice, because we found that it was not a factor. It did fire. Yeah.
So it does work. So, okay, so the other line that I was researching was the salary for retirements. We had budgeted $37,978, and we've spent $8,299.68. What we had done was, we had a large sum for a teacher, budgeted for FY '18, but we used FY '17 leftover funds and encumbered it, so that this is free to be used in this year's budget. So this is $29,678.32. I worked with Mary DeLusa, our food service director, today. We did our lunch financials through April 30th, and as of right now, the loss is $41,816.10. But to note that if we did not have the one-time consultant cost, we would be showing a profit right now approximately $8,700. So we are on the right path, people. We are on the right path. At the end, and then the last item we had, well, two items. Last, at the end of last year, you, the school committee approved $25,000 to do stages, I think, one and two of the library roof, and we encumbered $25,000. The actual cost exceeded our estimation of, by $8,425. So we did the first part, which was $17,300. So we have $7,700 left in encumbered funds, which will flow through income. And then, so we need an additional $8,425, and we need to get this done. The vendor said he would hold his price through spring, so if we can find, give Bob the authorization to spend the additional $8,425, we can get the, is it the window part of it?
These windows, yeah. So we've got to stop that leak there. So we fixed the leak that was going there, but we had that open tile there forever. So that's been fixed. Next part is to do that. And then further on down the line, where our building subcommittee's working on is the envelope above us here, and what we're doing there. So, but that's the, there's five-part steps there.
The last part, the regional transportation, we have $21,379.22, and that is mostly from the fuel adjustment clause that we saved that much money. So right now, our total budget savings, April 30th, if we did all those things, would be $20,746.32. So we're still at the good, even if we had to spend the 10, which we're hoping we won't. But I would like to have a vote for Bob to finish the $8,425, so that we can go ahead and authorize that work to be completed.
Bob?
The question I have is, we got $20,000 that we forecast to have at this point. If we use the $8,400 out of the budget, it's not going to leave us very much wiggle room between now and June 30th. Okay? I might suggest that we do have a rental account that had some money in it, and I'm not sure what the number is in that account. Possibly we could transfer some of that, or do the right kind of accounting, so we don't have to take it from what our operating budget is, because we don't have any room to wiggle at all.
The only problem is, is that you have to use the money to get the building in order to rent, and we don't have many rentals of the library.
But the cafeteria is underneath it.
Well, we don't have many rentals of the cafeteria either.
Nobody ever rents a cafeteria?
No, they, people use it, but they don't rent it.
Patty, can you...
I'm looking it up. I'm looking it up right now.
I know.
I just want to make sure that we don't end up without any money and have to go to town meeting, beg for money.
Would you want to put a freeze on everything, Bob?
It might be appropriate, but I think we need to fix the windows.
And while we're talking about towns, our budget is approved. We've got three out of four on our budget, and we just have to go to Conway, because we're three for four on the tractor, but that needs to be a four for four. So that will happen on the 14th of May. We will be going to Conway to see if they approve our tractor.
How's that look, Phil?
Looks good, actually.
You don't see a problem?
Knock on wood, but...
You don't see a problem with the tractor, or the budget, or...
No. I hate to say that. I hope nobody's... Yeah, yeah, but...
Phil is your new select person, too.
Are you?
Next Thursday, as of next Thursday.
Oh, congratulations.
Unless somebody writes...
He's going to be doing double duty.
Running candidate against you.
He's going to be doing double duty.
Actually, triple duty. He's at Conway Elementary. He has Frontier. He has this...
Is there anything else, Patty, that you want to talk to us about? I know you're looking, you're trying to look that up.
While I'm doing that, we did, at the recommendation of a few school committee people, I did find an attorney who is a graduate of Frontier, and I believe his children attend Frontier. And I met with him, and we discussed the purchase and sale. His main concern was if we had any oil, anything underground, and I told him that we had that taken care of and remediated last year. And I did tell him also that our concern is that we would, we would want to keep the, our files there for about six to 12 months, depending, so that we had a plan to move them. And we will be meeting with a company on May 9th. Is that tomorrow? Yes. We'll be meeting with a company tomorrow on that. And when I spoke to Mr. O'Beare, to let him, to find out who his attorney was, so I didn't call his same attorney, Mr. O'Beare said he didn't, he did not have, he was not going to have an issue with that. So, so I don't know, because this was the, there was a building committee, so I gave everybody a copy of what Attorney Goodrich has prepared for us. And I don't know if anybody, I know, Mr. Decker, you would like me to send the formal vote, which I will do, to Mr. Goodrich, so he has that.
Well, I think Mr. Goodrich, or the attorney representing Mr. O'Beare, is going to be probably requesting a certified vote of the board that authorizes the sale. Because when they go to certify the title, they're going to have to have a certified vote.
But we do have to move quickly on this, because we're on, where the clock is ticking, so I didn't know if you wanted, if he can go ahead and give, present this to Attorney Parsons, or did the subcommittee want to meet and talk about it? So I just gave a copy to everyone, and you guys can tell me where you want to...
I think you accomplished what we set out to do.
I think you accomplished what we set out to do. I mean, this is responsive to what the previous committee last month asked for. The only thing that I saw that was new was 2F, the deed restriction for affordable housing was kind of new, and is that something that we know in advance that Mr. O'Beare and Whately and every, that's, I mean, we didn't come up with that on our own, I know that.
Well, he, he had two of the units were going to be...
That was in his, that was in...
That was his, that was in his proposal of the second building, that two out of the eight or two out of the 10 would be less expensive, 800 versus 1,000, I think it was, or 800 versus...
But we had that conversation, because Mr. Decker brought that up, and the conversation was, we didn't care what he did with it after, so, I mean, we can take that off if you, and I told him that. He asked me if the committee had any feelings about the, Mr. O'Beare's use of the property, and I said, no, they did not, because when Mr. Decker brought it up, you guys all felt that it was not an issue to you, what he did with the building after he took it off our hands.
Just off the top, you know, if it's two out of 10, then it would be 20%. It's set up right now at 25%, so that overstates his...
Was it, I'm trying to remember if it was two out of eight or two out of 10. I don't remember the thing, but I know it was two out of something.
I don't see, I mean, it's, it's, A, 2A covers us for anything like that and covers the town.
But we have to have, correct me if I'm wrong, Patty, we have to have this first to give to Whately.
Correct.
To let them have first...
And Mr. O'Beare knows that, right.
You guys want it? No, then it goes back to Mr. O'Beare and we...
Well, no, we signed it with Mr. O'Beare, and then we presented to the town and say, we have a signed purchase and sales with Mr. O'Beare, but you have the right of first refusal. So if you refuse it, then we'll sign a purchase and sales with you. If not, this one is valid.
Are they, are they doing a purchase and sale agreement on their piece of property, too?
I believe, and you were there for the rest of the meeting, I believe at the town meeting, the town voted to allow the select board to enter into a negotiation with them.
Yep. That was true, right?
It is true.
Yes.
Question?
Yep.
Is there anything in here that says that we can keep our stuff there for six months?
Yes. It's in there. Twelve months, it's in here.
Okay.
We have to keep the insurance on it until we turn it over, which is also, that's normal.
You just want to vote to authorize the chairman to sign this particular agreement?
Well, first, it's going to go to Mr. Parsons and see if he has any changes. But you know what? If you vote that and there's changes, I'll just let you know what the changes are, and we'll already have the authorization for Mr. Holliday to sign, in case we need to do this before the new meeting.
So why don't we, I'll make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign the purchase and sale agreement after council on both sides has approved it, unless there's any major modifications.
Hold on. Since I've been abstaining from voting with what's been going on with this, because he does business with a company I work for right now, should I, should be able to still sign it or not?
We got to designate somebody. We could designate, I mean...
Somebody that we should be able to... I think we could appoint the superintendent to sign.
Or does everybody else in the meeting feel the committee want to be...
Actually, we could authorize the secretary of the board, Mr. Cantor, to sign it.
Okay. So can you repeat the motion to me? Authorize the secretary of school committee to sign the purchase and sales agreement...
You were asleep one night.
After council for, for the buyer, as well as our council have worked out any of the particular details, okay? Okay.
So you don't mind signing it? I'd be happy, but...
Have approved the document?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Bob Decker.
We're in the right direction with this.
Well, we don't have a vice chairman, otherwise we could have designated the vice chairman, but the vice...
We had a vice chair.
Left us yesterday.
So, and before that happens, I will, I think, Lynn, you and I should send an email to Russ to make sure that that is legal.
Oh, most definitely.
I'll be, I'm happy to sign it, I just...
But if you're going to go back and tell us how much money we got in that account, Patty?
Yes, about $44,000.
Okay. And I have another question. I don't know if all of you got the email. I asked the question, how much the cafeteria employees cost us in health insurance? And as my understanding, it's in excess of $80,000. And we basically serve about, say, $50,000 meals over the course of the year. I asked for that information, but I haven't got it. And that is a cost that's not reflected in your cafeteria report, okay? And one of the reasons it costs us so much is if they work 20 hours a week, we're required to supply the health insurance. And the cost of the health insurance could possibly exceed what we pay for wages in some cases. I would like the board to look at it, you know, if we're tonight, is coming up with a policy going forward, that any new employee that we hire works for 3 hours and 45 minutes a day, and then we don't have to pay that cost. I don't want to take anything away from anybody we've got, but I think we ought to know what it's costing, because it's not reflected in our costs.
We can't, because it's a federal grant program.
So put the federal grant programs and the health insurance in your grants, and then we don't have that problem.
We can't afford to. We would have no money left for the, to use the grants. We get, we get very little federal grant money.
I'm just telling you, we have all these employees, and it's costing you...
But, Bob, we have several postings...
Don't want to debate it, will you?
No, I'm just saying, we have several postings in other schools for cashiers for two hours a day, and no one will take the jobs.
I didn't say two hours. Three hours and three, three quarters. They're going to lose 15 minutes of time. I'm just talking about new employees. They won't qualify if they're only 3 hours and 45 minutes. They won't qualify. I'm not saying we reorganize it and take it away today, because all these people are hired and they do their jobs and they're doing well, but we ought to look for the taxpayers going forward, is what it's costing.
But then that would mean for every one person that left, I'd have to hire two people, because they're working five and a half hours. So I either have to...
Are they working five and a half or four hours a day?
I've got one at four here, and the rest of them are at five and a half. And then our lead person will be, is here, six hours.
Five and a half hours a day, five days a week?
Yes. 180, sir.
Well, I thought they only worked four hours, but you're nowhere near 20.
Everyone that works, everyone that works for us right now qualifies for health insurance. We have one person that works four hours, and we have three people that work three, five and a half hours, and we have another person that works six hours a day, and then we have Mary who works eight hours a day.
But I'm just saying, it's costing us a lot of money, and, you know, we can't sustain the program forever when you've got a sleeping cost of $85,000 for health insurance to serve the meals. It's roughly, it's over a dollar a meal. It's costing you for health insurance, and we're not getting reimbursed for it.
And I, I'm not disagreeing with...
Oh, wait, it's coming. You got something on the agenda to raise cafeteria prices.
I'm not disagreeing with Mr., with Mr. Decker, but every single person that takes these jobs, take it for the insurance, and they leave here and work a second job to pay their bills.
I didn't take it away from them, Patty. I'm just saying, anybody new you hire...
But you're strangleholding us going forward if someone should leave.
I'm just talking about the new hires. I'm not trying to take it away.
Okay, before we vote on Phil being our designate on this, on this contract, Bob Decker made the motion, we never got a second.
Second.
Thank you, Judy. Is there any other discussion about Phil?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Signing the purchase and sale agreement on the blue school. All in favor?
You're the man, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
Make sure your record is unanimous.
I got 900.
What's the name of the street that we're in?
I don't know, just a quick question.
It's on South Main Street, when you go down South Main Street, it says BF.
Problem with the insulation here.
It's the insulation, the issue, the AC is not cranking, that's for sure.
Okay.
Bob, Bob was kidding about it in the last meeting we had.
We had a meeting the other night on top, too, so I don't have the ability to turn it up, so...
Allison, do you have any comments tonight?
Turn it down.
Thank you.
We do have a student advisory for tonight. What's your name again, please?
Darian Myers.
Darian is a senior. So this is Darian's first and last meeting.
But you were here, you've been here before.
I don't believe so.
Were you here with the group that night from the shooting?
I was not. I had a really important rehearsal that night for the musical, so I believe I was...
So what kind of report?
Loved you and Fred, by the way.
Oh, thank you. Mostly just the student council. I've been on the student council for four years, and we haven't done a whole lot the second half of the year, because most of the action is actually between September and December. But our biggest project has been planning Field Day, which we've had for the past few years, and we find that it's a really nice way to sort of reunite the school before we're off for summer. And so the past few meetings, we've been organizing the date times, getting approval from teachers and Mr. Modesto, and then organizing activities for the students to participate in.
Is there, is it a half a day?
It starts at 1:30, I believe.
So it's like 45 minutes?
Thursday. Yeah.
We can't get...
Every year on this, it's 45 minutes, exactly.
We tried to get, we tried to get it a little bit longer this year.
Can we get a little bit more?
Forty-five minutes?
The issue is that May is very busy when it comes to AP exams and graduation.
Darian, please tell us, what do you have tomorrow for...
I have AP literature tomorrow.
Then what's the day after that?
AP government.
Then what's the next week?
AP stats and AP human geography.
Very busy, very busy person.
What's the date?
Well, I was advocating more time for, you know, were you a part of today's festivities or were you testing today?
I was not, so...
Okay. Just asking.
The school nurse is laughing.
Thank you for report.
Thank you.
Good luck in school.
Simmons College, I'm majoring in secondary education.
Cool.
Great. Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Did we ever vote for the $8,425 as well?
Well, that's exactly what Mr. McClellan was writing his hand.
Hi, dear.
Did we ever resolve whether we're going to use the $8,425 for the window?
The roof? To get the windows done, the $8,425.
Leaving $12,000 in the budget.
Most of you give the $8,000 for the window thing.
Second. Am I to say this part of that calculation already?
Yeah, it is.
It is.
It's not 12, it's 20, okay.
There'd be 20 of you doing it.
I thought we voted on it, I'm sorry.
No, I can...
I'll confuse about Phil signing the documents. Thanks, Keith.
We're going to talk about the... Okay, so the work must be completed this spring?
For them to hold the price.
Okay.
So, so Phil has made the motion to accept the balance or the spending of $8,425?
Yes, spending.
Spending of $8,425 to finish the, complete the library window upgrades. Do we have a second?
Second.
Phil? All in favor?
That was important, thank you.
Darius, you want to take the lead on the building renovation?
So we had another meeting last week? Just yesterday.
Thursday night?
Thursday. We did a walkthrough with the, similar to the walkthrough that the, that you've been on a couple of years ago, showing, they wanted to see what was broken. And so we did a quick walkthrough, and we were, I would say, satisfied overall with what we were looking at trying to fix. And now we're kind of committed to the point of moving forward to looking at, zeroing in on the different financing options, and whether or not we go out for a bond, whether or not we do some combination. The biggest thing is that the committee, and the committee's going to come, bring it back to the school committee, because, you know, it's a subcommittee of the school committee, so it's going to come back here for the vote on these things. And at the last meeting, they also talked about, talking with finance committee, so we're going to invite finance committee, once we get a little bit better idea, which will happen, hopefully at the next meeting, Joe Markarian will be there to kind of give us one more, kind of walk through the numbers, and then we'll kind of have different proposals to move forward, and hoping at that point. And then we will reach out to finance committees. The select board members felt that us inviting one of them directly to hear and talk, and especially, I would say especially talk with Joe, who really knows the numbers even better than myself, and moving forward from there. So again, our deadline is still the end of December. We probably are going to have to have a meeting over the summer. We're kind of clear on that within our planning, if not one meeting, two meetings, to get the thing moving along, so we're in the right place come fall. So that's kind of where we're at. And then the other thing was the, you're asking for redo tonight, it's just in my mind, creating a capital stabilization account for Frontier. We do need to do that, we do need this group to vote it, but Joe wasn't at the last meeting. I'm going to be meeting with him the next week or so to come up with the language, I'll bring it to June, so we'll throw that in the June agenda to vote to create capitalization subcommittee, I mean, capitalization...
Capital stabilization.
Capital stabilization.
Capitalization stabilization account, thank you. Yeah. Anybody else there can jump in on...
The important part of the capital stabilize is we're going to come up with definitions, we're working on those, but actual definitions that are going to govern what's capital, what's not, all that stuff, like, like a real, like a real organization.
Yeah, to jump on what Phil just said, one of the concerns was, coming from the select board, is that, you know, we'd be using this money to pay for deferred maintenance, rather than things that don't have the longevity that a capitalization, capital account should be funding, you know? For example, what were you, they were using that example, you know, buying a lawnmower, you know? You know, you know, those kind of things. We decided to rent the lift now instead of going to buy one, so, but anyway, those are the...
I just have a question that maybe Mr. Decker would know the answer to. What's, if you guys have already voted a stabilization fund, why do we have to have another fund called capital stabilization?
We're just trying to peg the money aside if we can, okay? So that we're not going to be, we're going to be getting appropriations from the town. We want to make sure that it's not going to get mixed up with the rest of the stabilization, because the selectmen of the towns are going to want to make sure that what they give us for capital appropriation, they can actually see is getting spent on the capital projects and not being mixed with everything else we do.
So everything, since I've been here, the only thing that we've done on stabilization is capital projects, so what else would go into the regular stabilization account?
I think they just want assurances that when they given us $500,000 or $600,000 between the four towns next year, that we're not going to spend it to balance our budget on something else.
Okay.
I think that's the...
Scott Bergeron was pretty, pretty sharp. I think he's pretty sharp.
He is.
But he was dialing in, this is, this is what the townspeople are going to want to see, you know, instead of just looking for some money, this is what you need to put in there, because that's the only way I'm going to be able to sell, sell it for, for the schools.
I mean, because, I think that'd be the whole presentation of what the plan is, but it's, the idea is that we're creating this account because we have a first-year large sum of money based on the track, which is really kind of the, it's really busting any kind of, other than going for, going directly to town is just because the track would be too much, we had to get some sort of loan or that kind of thing, or bonds, so to speak. But we also want to plan, how do we take care of these other things over the next five to 10 years? And if we can show that, create an account where we can get the money to go into the account, and what we're funding the next five, 10 years moving forward, rather than they wanted to go away from the large, one of the ideas that's not been settled yet, is to go away from the large bond of, you know, around $3 million to fix everything, rather do a smaller bond, fix the core things, and then go after capital funding over the next few years, which is a longer, more difficult haul, but that's what we're discussing. Gives the towns more control.
This is one of those issues that should go hand in hand with, as Patty's told us 20 times in the last year and a half, addressing the shortcomings and the things that are missing from the regional agreement, because the regional agreement is silent on capital expenditure, and we get into all kinds of difficulties in trying to, to expend money and obtain money for capital expenditures, because there's no guidance in the regional agreement for it. There are several of these areas of the regional agreement that are archaic at best. So we need to, we need to be working on the regional agreement, so maybe for next, next April, instead of town meetings, we have some amendments and some changes in the regional agreement, ready to go. I mean, we do this with the budget process every year with the timeline. We ignore the regional agreement completely, because nobody knows what the hell is in it, and the dates have been ignored for a variety of reasons, because it's the governor's budget, senate budget, house budget, this, that, and the other thing, so we don't adhere to some of the stuff that's in there, not to, not even to mention the stuff that isn't in there. You know, I agree with Billy. The agreement has to be gone through and modified and brought up to the 21st century, because we got a lot of things in there that need to be cleaned up, and I don't want to
And I don't want to talk about them tonight, but there's a lot of things that need to be cleaned up. And going forward, we also need to think about, I know we kicked the can 14 times, Billy's been there for 15 times, about K-12 and what have you, but we really need to get into the 21st century. And whether or not these towns, the individual towns, ever want to get involved in being somewhat progressive on trying to make sure we don't spend all kinds of money that we don't need to spend, because we're not doing it efficiently. So we need to talk about it, and I don't think that tonight's the night, but we need to do it. And going forward, what we're doing, and the bills you pay in the individual towns, you know, it's four invoices for everything, four different payrolls, four of this, four of that, plus Frontier.
The problem is, unless the state sweetens a coffer to do K-12, I'm not going to say it never happened, but it probably will never happen.
But you can go K-6, Bobby. And the biggest cost that we're going to have K-6 wise is, some of the health insurance is a little bit higher in one of the towns or the other towns.
It's all across the board.
Eighty versus 50, and everybody's got to come up to 80, under the law.
No, not if we stay K to 6. If we went K to 12, we'd have, they'd have to come up to what we are. But if we were recommending a K to 6, we'd have to go, we would have to renegotiate that because the four, each town has a different rate.
It's a brand new region, okay? That would be a brand new region.
Separate from Frontier.
Yeah.
Because we would have to, if we did a K to, I'm sorry, Mr. Decker, but if we, the biggest part of doing a K to 12 is that we would have to bring all our teachers up to their, up to their, this salary schedule, and we don't want to do that, because that would be salary plus insurance. And in most regular districts, there are two salary schedules, high schools always differ from elementaries, in most of the districts I've been in. So that's why you wouldn't want to go K-12. But K-6, Mr. Decker is right, the biggest fight would be the insurance, but then there would also be a regional transportation reimbursement.
You know.
That's for, that's for another day.
But, you know, history has it, when I first went to school here, we had a superintendent principal, and then the principal and the.
How many kids were in that, how many kids were in that school?
About 600 at the time, or 700, more than you got today. And they took the regional, the union superintendent retired, so they decided they were going to save money, and they yoked, but we've never formally merged, okay? And, you know, and I got out of here 54 years, guys.
Okay, enough about that. We'll get onto some new business, we got a few things. We're going to talk about raising the school lunch, by 10 cents, I think.
I'm going to let Patty do that. So we have, in my six years to here, we've never had an increase, the lunch has always been $3. And our wages have gone up, and our, our food costs have gone up, and we've never raised the prices. And we, once again, we are forced at the elementary level to increase because we are going to once again be below the refunded amount for a free lunch, so we're raising them at the elementary level, and we just thought at this time, we may want to go from $3 to $3.10, because we have not had an increase in so long at the high school.
Now, when we do this, based upon the number of meals we've served this year to date, how much of a profit would it be exclusive of the issue I have with the health insurance?
What?
The 10 cents times, how many cents a year does?
I don't, I don't have the number of meals that we've served.
When they have a profit on the lunch service, that's like, it's not.
No, what I'm just trying to say is if we, if we're going up 10 cents.
So last, up to this, since the beginning of this school year, last April 5th, we had served 6,000 lunches, 6,129 lunches, so multiply that by 10 cents.
600 bucks. Approximately.
Might, I might think that you might want to go to three and a quarter, if you're going to go up, and you haven't done it in six years, you know what?
You know what, what strikes me here, we just got done, Patty was cheerleading, we just got the train headed down the tracks. Now the first thing you're going to do is throw a log across the tracks for the train. You're going to do, everything that we just paid a bazillion dollars to do, and we're getting it done, you're going to mess it up, you're going to screw it up by raising the price of the lunch for 600 bucks, because you're not going to buy the lunch. We just, we're this close to getting it right, don't mess it up now.
Okay.
Are you talking about the 10 cent bill or the 20 cent? We know exactly where it is, because you're going to screw it up.
Move we not raise the price.
Hold on, hold on. We did it lately last night, the reason why we went from $2.90 to $3, correct me if I was wrong?
We went from $2.85 to $2.95. And we have to, because we can't turn, we're going to get $2.92 back for every free lunch that we serve, so we can't, our selling price can't be lower than what we get back.
Is that the same thing at the high school?
We're at $3, so we're still secure here. But we have not had an increase, but I understand, I understand Mr. Smith's point too, and you know, maybe we should defer for another year and see how this goes. But in six years, we've had wage increases, we've had food cost increases, and we haven't had an increase in the pricing, but I would not, I would not have a problem with not going up to.
As long as we're fine with the federal government.
Exactly.
We're going in the right direction, it seems to be, we're selling more lunches, and we're headed in the right direction, maybe it gets even better next year.
Keith? Just a couple of questions, what is the lunch price at each of our elementary schools?
$2.85, and we're recommending it to go to $2.95.
That's the same for all of them?
We keep the prices the same.
And then earlier you said that if we had not hired the food service director, we would be making a profit of $8,000 this year, particularly next year when we don't have that cost of food service director, there should be a profit next year if things stay the same.
Correct.
So you want?
But we've also got equipment that's 20 years old, that's starting to fall apart, so we need some money. And again, I don't even think that that's on any of our capital repair lists.
It's on the capital list, it's not on the A-list.
Man, that ain't happening then.
Love to see a smoothie machine for the high school. They have a smoothie machine at Deerfield Elementary, and they love it, and it's a great mind maker, kids like it, it's healthy.
It's something, if Darius would let us borrow a couple bucks, we could, we could buy one.
It's about $400, a commercial grade, but you put fruit in it, it's very healthy.
So why don't we make a motion not to take any action on the increase at this time? Why do we have to make, we don't have to do something, just don't do it.
It was a discussion.
Well, there is a vote.
So we need to vote.
Oh, there is a vote, sorry, okay. I'm okay with being rejected.
Well, somebody make a motion.
Hope to maintain current cost of school.
Second.
All in favor?
Thanks, Bill.
Who's going to talk about Mr. Charles Mark?
I can do that. So Mr. Mark is our neighbor, and he previously made two very large donations to the school, one to redo the library, and the other was to set up a scholarship fund. And I think that, if my memory corrects me, it was about $40,000 he gave us for the scholarship. Well, Mr. Mark is very astute, and he came to see me and asked me how much money did the $40,000 earn? And we are restricted by law as to what funds we can invest our money into, so he wasn't happy with the return. So he asked for his money back, and I gave him the interest plus the two awards we had made, and he took the money back, and he has now set up an account where it's earning a lot more interest, and he is going to give us the money every year so that it can earn more interest. And he has it set up that should he, or when he passes away, the balance of that fund will be given to Frontier, whatever's in that fund goes to Frontier, that will be, that's part of the fund he set up. So this year, his fund made, I think he made $49 with us, and his fund made $700, so we're going to happily accept the $700 for a foreign language scholarship.
So moved.
How many scholarships is that going to be?
Oh, that's up to the committee that.
He actually came in and met with the foreign language department last week.
Wow.
And he can speak every language, because he went right around the room, talking from German to Russian to French to Spanish, he went back and forth, I was like, wow. So they were all talking, but they, he left it up to foreign language committee to decide if they want to split it, or give it to one, and it's going to be based on the, so I'm not going to give that away. I know the answer, but yeah, it's having been told.
Be nice to him, because I ask him over fact that he has a quiver full of arrows.
He's a very nice gentleman, he's very knowledgeable, and he's also an author, and he's written a couple of books, but one of them's called like an immigrant's journey. He has the most fascinating background of anybody I've ever met. And you probably, you may have seen him in town, he rides, he's like, what is he, like 95 years old, and he still drives that, like a large tricycle bike.
Question, do we still have money for the library?
Library money is still sitting there.
Yeah, he didn't take that back.
Well, hopefully within the next year, we can.
Right, so if you understand where that money is, so there's $35,000 there to upgrade.
This area.
The things in the library. The problem is, we're trying to get money to fix this, which would require removing the drop ceiling to put in a platform floor to increase the insulation and have to stir everything up, and put new lighting in for energy efficiency and all that. When you do that, you're going to ruin everything below it, so to speak. So we could, technically, I guess we could buy furniture, because you move furniture out, but we can't remove carpet, fixtures and that kind of stuff, so we can kind of put it on hold. It's kind of dragging, I mean, as we know, this process is longer than my dream at the beginning, but, dreamer. So, you know, it has been sitting there a while, and I apologize to him for that, but we want to do it right, so.
So we need a vote, somebody want to make a motion?
I already made the motion.
And I second it.
All in favor? Okay, Patty, I think they're next again?
No, I think that's Carrie's.
Oh, okay.
If you look in your packet, there's a document, it's, I think it's yellow, well, there's a yellow stripe on it. These are the non-union salaries adjustments, the raises for non-union employees. And what we've done, what was established before my time, and what we've been doing is essentially a cola of 2% each year, and it mirrors the three-year CBA for the teachers and the IAs, the 2%. So these are the, these are already in the budget, we did include them in the budget when we built the budget, but these are the salaries that I'm recommending for, for next year, school year.
And we'll be voting on this next meeting in June.
Next meeting. This is just for your information.
Who's going to, any other discussion on this? If not, we'll move later on. Discussion appointment of cafeteria team leader for the vote in June.
Well, we presented that in April at the school committee, joint school committee meeting, but apparently it wasn't in the minutes of the meeting, because I said we were going to vote in May, but because it wasn't in the minutes that we presented it, Donna says that we can't vote for it until June. So we gave you, again, the job description and the salary scale that will go along with it, and then I guess we're going to vote in June. But these, but these are, when we talked, we had talked that these would go back to January, because we had originally told you we'd have it ready for January, so anything that, if this gets approved, these people will get retro back to January. And then the schedule that you're looking at has them already moved, and not changing. So they won't get another step or a percent increase in June, because they're going to get it in January. Make sense?
Totally combined.
So this is the one that, when you were trying to get approval by the towns to participate in the food service director position, the shared food service director position, this was what you dangled out in front, I know the Conway School Committee, you dangled that in front of them, and said that the current food service person.
Is going to have a new role, and this is the new role.
And that they're going to end up supporting all the changes because this, because of this thing. And so this is the long awaited thing that was supposed to happen then.
Right, and we gave it to you in April at the joint meeting, Mary presented it.
Right, but the employees still have no idea that this is.
Correct, because you haven't approved it yet.
Okay, that was the right answer, good.
So this is just a better benefit in a job title for existing personnel, there's no new personnel.
There's no new personnel, everybody's already fulfilling this role.
So moved.
Well, you're not supposed to vote.
There's no volatility in voting. Because it wasn't in the minutes of April.
Couldn't we amend the minutes in April, and then, well, never mind, all right.
Well, the problem was, it was presented in the joint committee, and that, and then it's meant to be voted on with the individual committees, but she presented in the joint committee. And I apologize because I did not put down that particular piece about the cafeteria team here.
That's all right, we can vote again.
Next is request to use a free cash discussion vote in June.
So this goes back to Mr. Scanlon, when he presented the audited financial statements, that there's, there is an accounting error with the way that we are withholding the insurance with our employees, and this is something that I've been trying to have addressed for the six years that I've been here, because it just doesn't, it's never made sense to me. So Mr., when we brought on Mr. Scanlon, I brought it to his attention, and he did one year, this is his second year of testing, and he's in agreement that the correction needs to be made. So he had asked me to wait until after his tax season to work with him, and he's just been very busy. So I told him, listen, I don't have much time, I got two meetings left, and they've got to vote the use of free cash, so we're going to put it on for discussion without a number, but in June, we'll have the actual number. So I have a date, I have my assignment of what he needs me to get done, and then we will be meeting, and we'll know the amount, but we don't think that it will exceed $60,000.
But that's the number that you were talking about originally, was 16?
Correct, we're hoping it's a little low, but then again, it just, you know, we were talking last year, 60,000, but now they, it just increased like 5% and 3%, and that'll be the July and August, so it might be a little more, so I'm hoping it's not going to exceed 60,000. But just like you guys always want, we want it presented in one month and voting in the next, and unfortunately, Mr. Scanlon just didn't have time to work with me to get the number.
So what do we have in the free cash account?
Oh, I believe we have like $125,000.
So that'll leave us roughly 16.
Did we get half? Let me pull up my budget documents. Let me just pull this up real quick. I hate that having a mouse, I can't work this stupid thing without the mouse.
They're not that expensive, Patty.
Oh, I just forgot to bring it.
Darius, you think in June, we can have the air conditioner going in here?
Depends on the agenda.
There's a name here at the top, we might postpone it.
Good point, I'll get that AC bit.
What are you looking up, Patty?
The assessment, I'm looking for my assessments, because I know in my assessment page that I have the summary of the free cash.
The other thing is, we might want to think about, in our June meeting, we may have a better handle on what accounts are already overdrawn, before we, you know, wiggle around with whatever money we have.
Meaning free, with free cash.
We might have to use it.
For what?
If we, if we don't have enough money, we only had $20,000 to play with. You know, in the current budget, we might have to find some money.
I'm sorry, this is taking so long, I'm just trying to get the right document out to the page.
We got $3.5 billion in unspent budget balances in six weeks to go, so I'd like, I'd like to think we can make it.
Me too.
786, 521, and 11 cents. While Patty's looking at, let's just move along to.
We have $146,283.
Okay, thank you.
Pressure.
I'll leave us about $80,000, 86.
A little bit, so the policy committee, the three members are on this board, and we've been meeting quite often, we've actually finished. We've actually finished the ones that we had set out this year to do, and they've all been emailed to you. What has come to my attention afterwards was there's two that the principals had read about and they had questions about. And one is school choice, and one is the acceptable use of computer policy. And the piece in the school choice one talks about two lotteries or two choices, and the first being in June, and the principals felt that that was too late to have it open, that they would lose applicants for school choice. So what I've done is addressed that, cut out some pieces, reworded it, and I will send that to the committee, I will send it to the committee, but we can't really deliberate because we have to meet, but I would like to have that one voted on in June as well. So I don't know if you can give me five minutes and then we could, you know, send it. It's in my office, if you could give me-
You send, we send it, Donna sent it out yesterday.
The school choice one?
Yes.
Oh, with the acceptable use policy?
Yes.
Oh, well then-
To everybody.
Those are the ones that we've done. I didn't know that she went forward with that. Well, and then we redacted a sentence out of the acceptable use that says the principal and/or superintendent designee will be checking social media for anything that an employee would be doing, and that's just, we just can't do that. So, and I don't know if Darius has anything else to add.
I mean, I had some small questions on some of them as a, because you vote them, you know how these policies would be put away until it's a problem, and then, you know, that works. So, I mean, I'm looking at the social media policy, and, I mean, obviously the one thing that we were going to watch all the teachers' websites, that was going to, or social media was going to be, probably to be removed. You know, I was looking at, it says, you look at number one, D, it says, "All contact and messages by coaches, faculty, advisors, with team members shall be sent to all team members except messages concerning medical or academic privacy matters, in which cases message will be copied to the appropriate administrator." And then, the one below that, the teachers might give out their private cellphone or home phone numbers. Well, when they text out currently practice, what happens now with a lot of our coaches is we don't supply them with phones. So they will say, you know, practice can't, let's say they do Saturday practice, they bloated everybody in, practice is canceled today, they just gave away their private cellphone number, in violation of this policy. I was talking with Allison, actually, and when she goes to Washington DC with the older kids now, she gives her a cellphone out anyway in case they get broken up, you know what I mean, or divided, that kind of stuff. And so, again, it was just kind of, yeah, the concerns regarding to what level. And then, I don't know, I just had an overall concern about, it just talks about inappropriateness of posting, exhibiting, the advocacy of use of drugs and alcohol. So if, you know, if a teacher is showing a toast at their daughter's wedding, they're using drugs and alcohol, you know, to what level are we supervising? And so that's just my concern because our job administratively is to enforce it, we know we have to have guidelines on it based on, based on last fall, but at the same time, I also want to make sure that we're, I don't know, at what level do you have freedom of speech, and I don't want to get us in trouble there.
So, can we put something in there that would say, I don't know, at the discretion of the principal's superintendent, or, I mean, how would you address that? The cellphone thing makes sense to me, but I would qualify that for personal business. Teachers would not give cellphones to kids for social and/or personal business. If it's coaching or field trip, most definitely.
In one other district that I was in, in order to control this with the sports, that is why there's a captain of the team, so the coach would only text the captain of the team, and it was the captain of the teams to give the information to all the other team members. So the coach was only in touch with one person and not the entire team.
That doesn't protect that one person.
I know, but it limits your exposure to the whole team.
Well, it also implies that every child that would be on a team, a captain, would have to have a cellphone. Now, we know everybody does, but what if that child is not economically disadvantaged and they don't have a cellphone? So if I could put that qualifier for, not for social and personal reasons, or whatever, and qualify that so that we're covered if someone, again, puts on Facebook something totally inappropriate that we've experienced. Now, the other piece that you're talking about is-
I don't know, was the-
Yeah.
Talking about inappropriate posting of exhibiting and advocating use of drugs and alcohol, examples of inappropriate behavior from other districts and behavior to avoid. So is that kind of, and I didn't really understand what that, I was just looking.
So if, my interpretation would be, if I was giving a toast at a wedding or I'm with a champagne, that's an appropriate use. Now, if I'm laying down drunk, having a cheeseburger out of my mouth, this is David Lawsonberg, I don't know, but if I'm, that's not okay. But that's not appropriate. But if you're with a group of people and you're all smiling, I would-
I don't know with-
Yeah, I don't know. Allison, what do you think?
I mean, not that I'm taking off the meeting because I'm not, it's just- I think the things that are involving people personalized in their social media accounts is, I mean, the MTA reminds all the teachers not to have social media sharing accounts with students all the time. We let our membership know every year, we cannot be friends on Facebook, you know, we're not supposed to bubble kids on Twitter. Once a student graduates, they're not students anymore, so that can happen. But for us to have our Facebook pages monitored and stuff, you know, it could be, I think some of the lineages just-
Well, we took out the piece about monitoring Facebook. These are recommended by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I mean, three of the committee members are here, so there's a quorum of the policy committee. But my concern is, we can take it out, but then-
There's nothing to protect us.
What happens when another thing happens like what happened last fall?
I definitively remember when I was being hired, Mr. Cantor asked me, if he looked at my Facebook page, what would he find? Because it does now, whether we like it or not, social media comes into play with hiring decisions. So when you're saying monitoring your Facebook pages, employers do it. Because it's out there for the public, it's shared.
Absolutely.
Well, we wouldn't make a practice of monitoring, that's not it, but when something like last fall happened, that little line in there, inappropriate use, if I'm, you know, with my friends at a dinner, or, you know, celebrating in a certain way, I don't think that's inappropriate, but if I am naked with, you know, with a joint or something, that would not be okay. That would be terribly, terribly wrong, and that would be, that would be worse.
What you want is your, we don't care.
Is that the policy at Mar? I mean, if it's a general policy that their schools are using, I didn't know that. So, and I know this language that the MTA has out regarding warning their members.
I think that the concerns that you identified are perfectly legitimate, and that the policy should work for the school. It doesn't matter if every other school has, you know, everywhere has something, but we don't have to do it the way, it should work the way it should work, so.
But if we don't have something- So can we look at what the MTA has put out and say something like following the MTA guidelines, because they do tell them not to do all this stuff?
I would hesitate only because we have non-union people that would also be held to that high standard that are not members of the MTA. We have non-union people, that would be me, if I was at a party-
Naked with a joint.
Yeah, right, but I would never, I wouldn't know how to do that. I wouldn't know anything.
I can't believe I said that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Have, we shared these with our esteemed counsel to make sure that he's actually reviewed them before we adopt these policies. He may have some words of wisdom.
I would imagine, I would imagine that MASC has had their lawyers looked at every single one of these new policies. Some of them are brand new that we don't have policies on, some of them are that we're changing, and some of them are just a couple of words, or a word coming out and a new word being inserted.
But what I'm saying, if we're changing it from what the boilerplate that came out from the school committee association, counsel probably should look at it and see, are we going off or aren't we? I don't know.
If he had a lawyer right, just follow that.
Yeah, I mean, this is not his bailiwick.
Nothing is his bailiwick. He doesn't go to sales either.
No, who is his bailiwick?
No, it's not. The idea that we have to run everything-
He's a retainer.
Yeah.
What does his, what he engaged, what the engagement letters say that he was going to do for us for a $550 one?
He does school committee policies, that's part of his job.
We did 99 policies, so I'm just wondering, I don't know what to say. I honestly don't. It was a lot of hard work, and we uncovered a lot of little rocks, and I kept coming back with new information, so I learned, we all learned, really, these were not rubber stamped, I have to tell you. Long discussions involved all of these. However, if it is something that you think should be taken out, then we could. I don't know.
We could pull that one and try to reword it or something.
My, yeah.
And maybe we could ask our attorney if he's got other school districts with other wording.
So the only, again, the only thing is, without a policy, I mean, I understand that regardless what happened last fall, it wouldn't have been okay because, but everyone was overage at that point, I don't know, without a policy, I don't know what to say. And the key word is inappropriate, it's not-
Going on a field trip is not inappropriate to give your phone number out, or teacher give to the kids, or the coach giving out the phone.
But we're going to change the language in that one.
Yeah, I almost said on that, for social reasons.
I have a couple other ones that are just small language ones, and I don't mean to kind of derail it, but they're just, I didn't realize I could give them to you and you could have changed them prior to this meeting. I wanted to give it to the whole committee because there was no, anyway. The other one is school choice, it says number three, resident students will be given priority placement in any classes or programs within the district. That reads differently in the high school than it does in the elementary school. So the elementary school, you won't get bumped from a class. Here, oh, AP physics is full, but your school choice, you're out, this kid's in. Varsity baseball team is a program at the school, you're out, you're in. You know, lead of the play, you know, you start, you go into, someone could say that, it says, I don't know, I just think, I just maybe they should say something in regards to the high school, or the wording on that. Am I reading it differently?
Is this something that we have-
It says number three, it says school choice, this is number, under the school choice one, number three, resident students will be given priority placement in any classes or programs within the district. And does that mean, could one read that and say that means your class schedule?
I can perhaps.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
We do have classes that fill and people get bumped, and we usually do it by seniority. Your seniors get it first, juniors get it second.
And you want to change the language in that, that was a good catch then.
And so I just, I didn't want that because that will be used if someone gets bumped, and, you know, we do have 160 school choice kids, so.
So you want it to say residents?
Just delete that little-
Price placement in schools.
I can delete it?
Yeah.
I'll strike that line.
Yeah, because I think by luck, yeah, I can hear it, yeah.
Yeah, because that would give some parents a good excuse not to bring their kids here.
Can you have another one?
Student fundraising.
We talked about this one a lot.
My only concern there was, should it say, "Other fundraising activities which involve students in fundraising processes should be submitted to the superintendent for approval or their designee." There is a lot of fundraising event, those all have to go down to the superintendent's office. It just doesn't, right now, right now the principal approves all the, we have approval process for all fundraising.
So you want, or their designee?
Or designee.
Okay, we can put that in.
I just think it was just bottleneck, or you got it in the superintendent's office for no reason. And then, the last one, it said, and I don't know if this is the law, but it is the submission of approval of school improvement plan, no later of July 1st. We've always done in the fall.
We took that out. Are you looking at the approved one? We took that out.
Is that one got, was that removed? Or is that the one that's being removed?
What, what's the number of that one?
That is BDFAE-3, submission of approval of the school improvement plan.
Those are the ones that got-
Is that the group that-
Yeah.
You have a BDFA?
No, we changed that.
Huh?
This was the last group that, we had two that went out, and then we had one that was released like on Friday or something last week. And I just didn't know if that's the law, or, because there's no way school council makes it, and that would be the-
We changed it, we changed it that to be where we were.
Did we change the date?
We changed it, I think to December or something like that.
Okay, good.
All right, I'll check that.
It is changed, it's fine.
It is changed.
Good.
If you find any more-
None left. I'll forward them next time to you, I didn't know we can change them prior to the meeting if the committee sent them out to everybody.
All right. So the rest of them are there, the top copy is what, we changed it to, the bottom will tell you what came, whether it's added and read, or we striked out, we struck out what was, what was happening, what the words were, so.
So I guess we just have the question on the social media policy.
We decided to take that, no, we decided to leave it in because the key word is inappropriate. And that's where the interpretation would come, and that would be the MTA's interpretation versus the school, but I would not, I would ascertain that we would not, unless it was truly inappropriate in a situation like last fall, as opposed to anything else. And I would trust that, that that would be, we would really, the key word there is inappropriate. I can't imagine there would be any trouble interpreting what's appropriate and inappropriate.
Oh, I'm, it's a committee's decision to decide how they want to do it, I was just pointing out-
Mary?
When I read through them, I just kind of was like, ooh.
I just wanted to ask something about cellphones, might be more procedural, and maybe something you guys have already discussed, but they do have cellphones of teachers and coaches for trips and all of that. Once they have your cellphone, they have it. And so, to be thinking about what happens on Friday night at 11 o'clock, somebody's in trouble, somebody's unsafe, and they text this teacher. So there's two parts to that. Your staff knows what to do if their phone is on and they actually see it, that they know who to notify, they'd call the police. But also, what if they miss that text? And there's a, what happens then? What happens if something happens and it was a text you missed? And I only bring it up because it's something we've dealt with, and just to, so that people know what to do.
Okay, okay. Any questions? We have not, yeah, we haven't done any training.
I mean, well, it's part of our world, everybody has everybody else's cellphone, but, you know, students do reach out, so.
Yeah, as the subcommittee, we frequently thought, you know, what is, what would Darius and others that are in charge of implementing this policy think of it? A lot of the times, we kind of felt like we were treading on, sort of on steady waters or whatever, just because-
Oh, all right, I get it. And I'm not, I'm not being, I'm only being critical because I'm looking at, those are ones that, they will come back and they'll say you didn't enforce your policy, and we're like, right now I can see that it's very difficult to enforce. And so we want a policy that works. I mean, policies as, you know, for school committees, it's, I don't know what you guys do.
What I was getting to is that I think that whatever, all of your recommendations, I would just vote to incorporate them.
Okay, so you want to take out the-
Well, I asked more questions than I was being critical. Because I was like, I didn't know what the thinking was or where the idea-
So you want to take out the inappropriate use on social media, the drugs and alcohol?
If that's what, if that's what, if that's what the thinking was.
Allison, chime in if you like.
I just found that there was some of this language that was very fuzzy, so probably unclear with people reading this policy saying, well, what does this mean? So maybe some clarification. unclear with people reading this policy saying, well, what does this mean? So maybe some clarification of what it is. I know that students, I mean, sometimes we have to give them our cell phone numbers. Our personal home phone numbers, we've got landlines, they're published. So, you know, everybody's got, so it's not as if we can keep that secret from anybody because the school directory is out there and, you know, people look us up in the bubble, believe it or not, make calls at home. So some of this just seems like, maybe it's just the language needs to be more clear about.
So do you want, are you saying the cell phone, that we don't put a qualifier on, we don't give our cell phone number for social or personal reasons, just school-related reasons? Or I could take, we can take that right off, that qualifier?
I like that, I like that line. It's that it's used for school business, any contact regarding should be for.
Like our emails.
For school business only.
Students email us just the same way that if somebody had a cell phone number, they might text. So, you know, they email at 10:00 in the morning or 10:00 at night. You know, on the weekend, they have a question, so.
Okay, so the next one that we're looking at is inappropriate reference to drugs and alcohol on social media. Take it out or?
I think you can leave it. After hearing what you said, after hearing what you said, I think you can leave it. I mean, you know, you're right, the emphasis inappropriate. You know, I eventually went to like, you know, I don't know.
Well, no, that picture of me.
I did not go to that picture of you, but I was, I don't know, I was just thinking of, you know.
You also have, it's inappropriate also advocating use of drugs and alcohol.
Yes, thank you.
Why are we talking about tobacco use? I mean, because it's not, that's illegal for children as well.
Well, back in the day, Marlboro used to give jackets and stuff.
We have a huge vaping problem.
We have a tobacco policy in school already. It's a separate policy.
And it includes vaping.
I just want to let you know, when I was in high school, we could smoke outside in a designated area. Ask students. I'm not sure what the age was or the thing, but we had a designated smoking area outside, believe it or not, at Southway.
And teachers had tea in the smoking rooms.
Yes, back in the day.
And Springfield, as a student in high school in the 70s, I, we could go out and smoke. Not that I would ever.
When I first came to the school committee as a 19-year-old kid, meeting in a conference room in a building that isn't there anymore, you couldn't even breathe. You didn't have room. One guy smoking a pipe, another smoking a cigarette, and a couple of smoking cigarettes in the meeting, in the room. That's the way it was.
All right. I, if it's okay with the committee members, the subcommittee, I'll, I'll actually work on these. We'll send them out again, and we'll include the principals. These three, the teach, the social media and the school choice and the fundraiser with the qualifier or designee. And then we'll send them out to everyone. They make great sense, and the policy committee was great. We learned a lot. We did a lot of work, and.
Should we get together for those other two?
If you want to.
And you're off.
Oh, after. Let's do it tonight. Oh, yeah, it'll be.
Do we have that?
Well, we didn't post it. We can't talk about it tonight.
So why don't you do it, we've been doing Tuesdays, right? Maybe next Tuesday? Take a look at, you look at your calendar, see if Tuesday's good. Tuesdays have been good for us, right?
I think I have Sunderland.
But we can, what time do you have Sunderland meetings now?
Six.
So we can go to CF a little after, at 5:00.
I'll have Donna post it.
Is that okay?
Just a short, like, six minutes. And we'll be looking at one, two, three policies. Okay.
And then, if, if you guys approve, if you folks approve, we'll send them out to the whole school committee. Because it'd be great to have all of this done by June. I think it'd be great for everyone to have it done. Thank you.
Okay. I have nothing as chair. Anything at the collaborative?
Collaborative, we haven't met since the last time. I did get the evaluation form in for the super, for the director. If anybody's got anything they want to share, then I can reflect in the evaluation. Kindly let me know. But I don't see anything wrong with the gentleman's performance at this point.
Are they still looking for a new building, Bob?
For some reason, they've been, they've been awful silent, Bob, and I don't know why. You know, it's, sometimes they, they work in strange ways. And I think a lot of it deals with what monies are available. And I, I'm not sure if we meet in the May or we're going to meet the end of June. But I know we, I had the forms to do the evaluation, and I've seen the evaluations from the superintendents. They've all been shared with us. And, you know, it's just one of those things, Bobby.
Thank you. Mr. Darius, you want to go over here?
Yeah, if I pass it out to you. Find that bunch of papers. So today was Teacher Appreciation Day during Teacher Appreciation Week. A little ice cream celebration with the teachers. It's kind of the month of testing. You've kind of heard a little bit of the AP tests. There's probably a different AP test every single day. I believe we're giving 14 different AP tests. We also had MCAS today for middle school math. And then you have middle school science coming up next week. So it's just lots of MCAS, lots of testing. Isn't that fun? The arts, last weekend was Fred, the student presentation of the arts. We also have the middle school concert tonight. And then next week is the high school concert. And then we also have our annual arts showcase day where we take a period out of the day. That's next Tuesday as well, where the students rotate between the different arts, student presentations throughout the, from the different areas, and they get to share that. And so we spend the day celebrating the arts there. So that's kind of happening there. NHS induction was last Wednesday, and where we have 26 juniors were inducted. And then graduation is just around the corner, at June 1st. And of course, you're all invited. Prom, Saturday. Not a date, no. Prom is Saturday as well, and that's going to be at the Log Cabin.
Do you need help?
With prom? No, perfect shape. Scott, I, myself goes, Officer Ravich goes now. That's kind of the, we have, not, not on what, but we have good kids. They're going to, they're going to make good decisions.
I met, I met the baseball team one day when they were leaving over here, and I fell behind Chris, put my arm around him, choked around a little bit, and I put the fear to God and all of them talking about prom parties and driving drunk. And I think their eyes were wide, wide open at the time.
And that's, you'll tell what else is not on here. Officer Ravich did a drunk driving last Friday, did a senior assembly at 1:00 where they, he has the cars that they drive, and they wear the goggles, and they have to go through the courses, simulate, you know, impaired. And then they give, you know, it's kind of funsy, that kind of thing. And then Chief Pritchard came as well, and then they kind of gave it to him. They gave the real speech about, you know, awful things that happened. And it's not just about, you know, driving drunk, but under any influence and the collateral damage of that. So it was, you know, it was both interactive, but also the heavy stuff too. It was a little bit of both. So that was, that happened last week as well. I should have had that on there.
Thank you.
Yep.
And we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So I am, I'd like to start by informing the school committee that I will be resigning as of June 30th. And thank you for the opportunity and letting me be a member of your community. I am also going to hand out, this came from policy committee, I worked on this form with the director of special ed, Karen Ferrandino, and the elementary, the early elementary coordinator. One of the things that came up while we were going through the policies was how many programs we have or how many specialized programs where students, sure, thanks, where students from one district or part of our union would go to another school, what goes on at Frontier? They have all these names. What do these names mean? So we taught, they asked me to put them down and really define them so that people would have a better understanding. People on the school committees would understand. So when we talk about wings or when we talk about horizons or we talk about aftap, and what, what's the life skills, when we talk about life skills, what does that mean? So these were the, these are the different programs that the district offers, and they are excellent, every single one of them. And they do save us a tremendous amount of money in out-of-district placements. And they also, a lot of them bring in tuition. For instance, in Conway, the tuition that is brought in by out-of-district place students helps, pays the program. And Conway has three students in their program, Conway itself, and they do not have to pay any tuition because it's in their district. But that money would have been a considerable cost had they had to send those children out. So these are definitely well worth, these programs. They do a great job.
It was, it was something during the policy committee, I just asked a simple question, didn't know how many programs we had. I know Wheatley didn't have any programs. I knew there was one at Deerfield, Conway. I found out there's one in Sunderland, and how many different ones we hear. I have here at the high school, which is, I knew there was some, but I didn't realize how many. What was it, four? I mean, that's a lot. And as far as I know, unless it's Jay, we, we don't send anybody out of district because we have these programs at the elementary and at the high school, unless that's.
We, we have two or three out of district. One we just had to.
Just now, just now, right?
The case has become so complex that they need a more, kind of a more involved placement. But we have quite a few. You'll see in the parentheses, numbers, and those are the amount of students that are in these programs. So we service a lot of children that otherwise would not be in their home schools. So it's a great thing.
Yeah. So I need a motion and a vote on Dr. Carey's resignation.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Move we accept Lynn Carey's notice of resignation with deep regret.
Take it.
A little second. He's not the moderator. He just called you Mr. Moderator.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, okay. All in favor?
Do we have discussions?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we have one more meeting in June?
Yep.
All right. And then for me personally, I'm gone for the whole summer. I'd come back. What's the process? Who's sitting in this chair in the fall? What do we do then?
We're in the process, if you got the email, recent email about, it was sent out last week to all school committee members about picking either the 21st, 22nd, or the 24th for a joint meeting to discuss two things, Patty's new contract and also get started on the new superintendent. So it's in?
Yeah, no, I answered that. I didn't know what, like, what's.
That's what, that's what's on, going to be on the agenda.
Okay.
We did a doodle. If everybody responded, we're trying to get, we're trying to see out of those three dates, the most people we can get on, out of those three dates.
I don't think everyone had responded.
There's still, I'm going to say there's still like 10 people who haven't responded yet. So I think I'll ask Donna maybe to send out a little, little reminder to doodle and give us an idea. I mean, some people put on all three days like myself. Damian, not here. He, he won't be here the whole week because he's, he flies that whole week. But, you know, that's, that's, that's what, right now, that's what's going to be on the agenda.
It's going to be the reorganization of this board, and then we're also going to take up going forward on the search for a superintendent or the procedures we're going to use.
Well, the reorganization of Frontier's group.
That's what, that's what I think.
Well, that doesn't happen until.
No, no, no. He wanted to know the first process.
Okay.
I don't think we do the reorganization of Frontier School Committee until.
Well, we haven't done it, we haven't done it in early because of some of the boards hadn't replaced their members and what have you in the elections. Conway's elections are next, 17th. Yeah. Is there any elections after?
Ours is, ours is in Wheatley, it's June.
So basically, we can't, the board can't really reorganize till after the June.
We could. There's no one running against me in Wheatley unless somebody writes in, so.
I don't know, kind of jigging for the hands.
We know how write-ins work.
Yeah. Nothing wrong with write-ins.
But that's, that was the plan, Keith. Do we have a, do we have a?
You have a motion.
Second, all in favor? Need a motion to adjourn?
I have, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Because the last couple of years, I've heard a lot about references regional agreement, going back, looking at the regional agreement, and nothing ever gets done. So I'm not looking to open it up. What would be the process by which we would actually start to look at it? Would we form a subcommittee? What would be members of individual towns? How would we actually start to look at the regional agreement? Because Bob's right, it's an antiquated document. It needs to be around the 21st century.
We need to bring Steve Hammond from the school committee, Regional School Committee Association here to make a presentation so that you can actually sit there and listen to him. He, he is the expert on regional school agreements. And, you know, he's a former superintendent, and it's worth it if we can get him here so that people who are new to the board can actually understand the procedures. Otherwise, this selectman can start it, or we can start it. We can vote to amend their agreement tonight with, if we had it on the agenda. And then it would go to each one of the towns, either approve or disapprove. I mean, it's.
It has to be a four for four.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's, it's, it's a four for four. Well, the last time they were here, it came up, it was four different places from the audience. You know, it's time.
That they were interested.
Yes. So they know something, something's going on. But the, we had a whole meeting here five or six years ago, and Stanley Rosenberg made the comment when K6 was brought up, that, oh, the Department of Education is never going to approve a K6. And afterwards, they, they approved a whole bunch of them. But we got told we couldn't have it, they couldn't do a K12. All they wanted at the time was K12s, okay? But they've since approved several sixes. Yeah. But if you want to have Steve come or somebody like that, you know, it, he loves to come, and he puts on a good presentation.
I'm just wondering, because it gets brought up a lot, but then I feel like nothing really ever gets done from it. And I'm wondering how seriously will we take actually looking at it as something we want to engage in next fall, over the course of the school year, to be through, to begin looking at it and seeing what changes can be made. And not, and I think, not necessarily looking to, to work cooperatively, not necessarily to look to, you know, put, hit the towns against each other, but more to bring the document into, I mean, what's it, like 65 years? It's been a long time.
1957 or so.
Last time it was amended was like six years, 10 years ago or something like that, in the 2000s, but it's remarkably absent and everything.
We had the amendment with the one man, one voting, and then we had an amendment two years before with the five-year averages. You know, it has been tweaked, but we've never done a comprehensive rollback.
Meaning money-wise.
A lot of questions.
There was a motion pending.
I think we all voted, are we?
I didn't vote.
All in favor?
Oh, who actually, it was.
I made the motion. Nobody expected it.
Okay, Phil Cantor to adjourn, Senator Judy Pierce, and it is.